The legal voters of the West River Modified Union Education District comprising the voters of the towns of Brookline, Jamaica, New Fane, Townsend for kindergarten through grade 12, and the town of Wyndham for grades 7 through 12, were notified and warned to meet at the Leland and Gray Middle School, Middle High School in Townsend, Vermont on the 26th day of June 2017 in the library at 7:00 PM to take action on the warned articles. I declare that the organizational meeting of the West River Modified Union District Organizational Meeting is open at 7:10 PM. Welcome to the organization of this new district. The purpose of this meeting is to elect officers, swear in a new board, and give the board the powers and duties it needs to conduct its business. I would personally like to thank all of the town clerks for coming. It means a lot that you guys took time out of your busy schedule. We will be very efficient for you. If I could, could I ask you each to introduce yourselves and the town that you represent, please?
Town of Brookline, Guy Tanser.
Pam Tweedy, Town of Jamaica.
Carol Hesselbeck, Town of New Fane.
Mike McLean, Town of Wyndham.
Anita Bean, Town of Townsend.
You just are a nice special guest.
He's a treasurer for Towns...
Treasurer, yeah.
And a tax collector.
That's even more important, because that's going to be really good.
He's got all the money.
Okay. So here is the voting procedure for tonight. To vote on articles from the warning, you must be a registered voter in the town of Brookline, Jamaica, New Fane, Townsend, or Wyndham, and pass through the checklist. Have all these people pass through your checklist.
Yes.
Okay, great. Your name will be checked against the legal list of legal voters of each town and receive a voting ballot if necessary to show during a voice vote if we need that. If a paper vote is requested, we will do the appropriate procedure. Okay? Non-residents and unregistered voters may not vote. Do we have any non-residents and unregistered voters other than me, Rich?
Me.
Big man.
Yeah, I'm a big...
Outside. Okay, just the three of us. We may not be allowed to speak without the approval of two-thirds of the assembly. However, at this moment, I am operating as the Secretary of Education's official designee. Once that role ends, if you want me to speak, I need two-thirds approval of the assembly. During a voice vote, please remain silent. Additionally, you may not raise your hands or stand in physical count is required. We appreciate your cooperation. Minutes are being recorded for this meeting. All motions, remarks, and discussions should be addressed to the moderator. Anyone wishing to address the assembly or anyone responding to questions from the floor must state his or her full name and speaks so that the comments may be heard by the entire assembly. All right. Will the elected board members from the West River Modified Union Education District please stand and raise your right hand? Before we do this, I'd like you all to introduce yourselves.
We can do that without raising our hand.
You can do that without raising your hand. Fiona.
I'm Fiona Crechevalier from New Fane.
Beverly Long, New Fane.
Joe Winrich, Townsend.
Nancy Dyke, Wyndham.
Al Glosson, Townsend.
Alicia O'Donnell, Brooklyn.
And we have three members that have been duly elected. Drew Hazelton from Jamaica, Patty Dixon from Jamaica, and Ken McFadden from New Fane. Patty was appointed. And they will have to be affirmed at a later date. All right, now, can you all raise your right hand? Okay. And repeat after me. Okay. You state your name.
I...
I, Al Glosson. Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...to be true and faithful to the State of Vermont...
To be true and faithful to the State of Vermont.
And that you will not directly or indirectly...
Not directly or indirectly.
Do any act or thing...
Do any act or thing.
...in interest to the Constitution or government thereof...
In interest to the Constitution or government thereof.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Anita Bean.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...that I will faithfully execute the office...
That I will faithfully execute the office...
...of Director for the West River Modified Union School... Hold on. Okay. That, I want to get this correct. You faithfully execute the Office of Director...
Faithfully execute the Office of Director.
...for the West River Modified Union Education District.
For the West River Modified Union Education District.
And will therein do equal right...
And will therein do equal right.
...and justice to all persons...
And justice to all persons.
...to the best of your judgment...
To the best of my judgment.
...and ability according to law.
And ability according to law.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you very much. You may sit down. I get the honor now of reading Article 1 from the official warning. To elect a temporary presiding officer and clerk from among qualified voters, of which all of you are. Nominations are now in order for one to serve as temporary presiding officer. Are there any nominations?
What are we looking for for temporary?
Oh, the temporary presiding officer.
How temporary is that?
That would be just until you elect a moderator.
So we're going to elect a temporary presiding officer, and then I am handing this off to the temporary presiding officer. Then they will... Then they run the show from this point forward, and they'll do the moderator, the clerk, the treasurer.
I nominate Rick Hegy.
Who, please?
Uh, Rick Hegy's name has been placed in nomination. Are there any other... He's right there in the picture. Are there any other nominations?
Who made the nomination, please?
I did, Anita Bean.
Thank you.
Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of electing Rick Hegy as your temporary presiding officer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. You have elected Rick Hegy as your temporary presiding officer. Temporary presiding officer takes over. Luckily, you have a sheet.
Is he the presiding and clerk also?
Do I do all those?
I don't think so.
Or do I stop the moderator?
Nominate a moderator.
Moderator take the nomination.
They didn't give me guidance on that, bro. I think you do it through the whole thing.
Through the treasurer.
Yeah.
The moderator takes over.
Yeah, but I don't think the moderator is...
You'll do it through here. I think you stop after they're elected. After three. You're done after three. Right?
Okay. My turn. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just waiting on a "aye."
Okay. First thing I do want to say, just because I know how things work. Peter has a list of names, so he can correctly put them in the minutes. If you have not signed that list to show that you're here, please do so before you leave. Hey?
Thank you.
Okay. Article 2 is to adopt Robert's Rules of Order or other rules of govern... of order to govern the parliamentary procedures of this and subsequent meetings of the district. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Right? I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
In Article 1 is to elect a temporary presiding officer, so you're the presiding officer and clerk.
I am the temporary presiding officer.
And clerk?
I'm going to let Peter do the clerk bit, because we're going to elect a clerk here in a minute anyway.
Okay, but it says to elect a temporary presiding officer and clerk from among the qualified voters.
I would suggest that...
So we have to do it by the...
It's a thing.
Can we just...
Oh.
No, this is a, this is an organizational meeting for Act 46. We don't get it right, we're going to wind up doing it again and again and again.
We definitely want to do it right.
And it's not really what I don't want to do.
So I'm going to nominate, can I nominate you for clerk as well, temporary clerk? That way we'll cover it, no matter what?
Sure. No, you can, you can have, if he wants to be...
I can't write notes.
He's got to take notes.
I got to take notes.
Can we elect the note taker?
He's not from... No, he's not from...
It's got a...
But now...
You can, you can delegate... Let's figure this out. This is great. The note-taking duties is the clerk to somebody else. And you can either...
I can delegate that to Peter.
I don't see why you couldn't.
Peter, you have been so delegated.
You haven't been elected. You're a temporary presiding officer, so now let's elect a clerk.
Yes, let's, let's elect a clerk.
I nominate Rick Hegy. Temporary clerk. Temporary clerk. I nominate Rick Hegy.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Nope. Are there any other nominations?
Oh, excuse me, yeah. Are there any other nominations?
Who nominated?
David Lebo.
David Lebo from Towns.
What? Oh, yes.
Hearing no other nominations, I'm going to instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Rick Hegy as temporary clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, so Rick Hegy is going to delegate Peter to keep the notes for him, and then I will review the notes and approve them. Yes, ma'am?
What is Peter's last name?
What is Peter's last name?
B-A-R-U-S. Barrows.
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 Okay, I think...
B-A-R-U-S.
I'm Alice Gausch from Townsend, and I would appreciate it if all the speakers would identify themselves at least first, so in case, because I don't know all of you here.
It's okay. I didn't know Peter's last name either.
Well, including the gentleman who opened the proceedings, who I was then told was the new superintendent of schools, and I did not know...
Bill, introduce yourself, please.
This inter, this gentleman.
Absolutely. My name is Bill Anton, the superintendent of schools.
Now, please, help, help make it legal. Trust me. We want to do this right.
Thank you.
Okay, have we gotten through that point okay? Okay, now, Article 2, restate, to adopt Robert's Rules of Order or other rules of order to govern the parliamentary procedures of this and subsequent meetings of the district. Do I have a motion?
Are we motioning for Robert's?
I make a motion that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order to govern the parliamentary procedures of this and subsequent meetings of the district. Mike McLean, Wyndham.
Second. Anita Bean, Townsend.
Okay. Does anybody want to suggest another type of parliamentary rules? Okay, all those in favor of adopting Robert's Rules of Order to govern the parliamentary procedures of this and subsequent meetings of the district, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, we have adopted Robert's Rules of Order for this and future meetings. Article 3, to elect the following officers to serve from their election and qualification for one year or until the election and qualification of their successors. Just to make note, as a point of information, Bill and I have been discussing this, and Department of Ed has weighed in. Under normal circumstances, it's a lot of folks' opinion that we would go ahead and elect a moderator, and the moderator would then take over. However, the Department of Ed seems to have some misgivings about that. So I will essentially be taking you through three officers, and then I will turn it over to whomever you elected as moderator for Article 4. And that's the way we've been instructed to do it. Okay. Are there any nominations for moderator?
I nominate David Lebo.
David Lebo's been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Deb Luskin.
Deb Luskin has been nominated. Any other nominations? Okay.
I can withdraw.
You can withdraw, yes, ma'am?
She beat me to it. That's no fair.
Have you officially withdrawn, Deb?
I have officially withdrawn.
Okay.
I'm on camera?
Nice.
Are there any other nominations? There being none, I'm going to instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for David Lebo for moderator. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You can do it. I've done that before.
What, said no?
Yes.
Said no, no.
Okay, nomination for clerk.
Does the clerk have to be a registered voter from this district, or can it be like Peter, who's from Dover and so forth, or do you know?
No, it has to be one of five towns.
One of the five towns. Has to be a registered voter. I can't...
Registered voter, one of the five towns.
Now, just as far as I know, that does not mean the clerk actually has to take the minutes at the meetings, but they have to serve as clerk for any little bits and pieces, like signatory authority and things like that. Nominations, Emily?
I wasn't going to nominate anybody, but I think it's a good idea to explain maybe that these are for the merged district meetings, not board meetings. So there's a difference. So anybody who's interested in being a clerk, it's not like you have to come to every board meeting and be clerk. It's the, the district meetings that happen once or twice a year. Once on, at the annual meeting, and then whenever other special meetings are held.
Right. Typically, it would be one meeting a year.
Right.
Okay. I'm Carol Hesselbeck, and I nominate Pam Tweedy.
Pam, is Pam here?
Yeah.
Hi, Pam. Are you willing to do it?
Yeah.
Are there any other nominations? Pam Tweedy, is it right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there is one nomination for Pam Tweedy. No other nominations. I'm going to instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for clerk for Pam Tweedy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I'm sorry.
Then Pam is the new clerk. And one more officer before I turn it over to David, and that would be for treasurer. Do I have any nominations for treasurer?
Cynthia Davis.
Cynthia Davis has been nominated. Will Cynthia Davis take the position? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll instruct clerk to cast one ballot for Cynthia Davis for treasurer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Cynthia Davis has now been elected treasurer of the district. David, here's your paper.
Thank you, Greg. Hi, my name is David Lebo. I'm from the town of Townsend. I am now the new moderator of the West River Modified Union Education District. Moving, moving on to Article 4, to determine and approve compensation, if any, to be paid to district officers. I will now entertain motions for compensation. Anybody have any idea what you'd like to compensate them?
What do other school districts compensate their officers?
Um...
Emily? David? Emily?
Yeah, Emily, sorry. I was thinking.
Since somebody asked, I can't, I can't tell you about every district in the region, but Leland and Gray pays $500 for the chair of the board and $400 for each of the directors, and $500 for the treasurer. I don't think anybody else gets compensation. Am I right?
If I may make note, because I was confusing the warning too, this is only for the clerk, moderator, and treasurer of the district. We'll get into the board money later. Yeah.
This is only for the moderator, clerk, and treasurer?
The board money comes, eight, Article 8, I think it is, yes.
So the... Moderator gets paid?
Yeah.
Could be.
Well, we haven't decided.
It's 50 bucks.
If, if. Well...
Is there going to be like two, eight, two or three meetings?
How many meetings are there a year for this?
Typically, there's one meeting a year for, for a union school district board. And the only union school district board we have in this region is the Leland and Gray, I mean, in this SU, is the Leland and Gray's board.
So they get $500 for one meeting a year?
No, no. So forget that part, but the, but on the officers...
That was, that was for the...
That'll be later.
Director.
On the directors.
And now we're just talking about the, so forget what she said about...
So we, Leland and Gray has not paid their moderator. They typically moderate one at most, two meetings a year, unless there's like special things like bond votes and things like that. I can't predict what, how many times this board will meet, but, but there's one required meeting every year. It's an annual meeting, and so there's definitely one. Leland and Gray has not paid their moderator. They also have not paid their clerk, same reason. Typically, the clerk takes the minutes at the annual meeting and any other special meeting. Sometimes I think they have to sign some things. But the treasurer does have to do a little more work, and then at Leland and Gray, we have paid the treasurer $500 for the work that the treasurer has done over the last number of years.
I have one question. Is this new, this meeting is going to, is the Leland and Gray board that's an existent now, is that going to dissolve, and this new board that we're electing tonight will be the new Modified Union Education District?
And it's not the only board that dissolves. The other elementary boards, except Wyndham, also will dissolve into this.
Right, so New Brook?
New Brook and Jamaica.
And this will be the only board for the high school and the elementary schools?
Except for Wyndham.
And when does that kick in? Does that start next year, or is that...
Starts 2019, July 1st, 2019, am I right?
So all, so in essence, all you folks will be, will be gone, and just the...
No, they've already been elected to this board.
Right, but that board is going to be dissolved?
No, no, this is the unified board.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, now I get it.
Yeah.
And, and being moderator, we're kind of off topic, but I'm giving leeway since this is all new. So, that's okay.
Thank you. I just need that clarification.
Yep, absolutely. So...
So I, I'd like to say something for discussion. I think the officers should be paid for their travel time and for their preparation time, so I think $100 is fair. I don't know what other people think, but...
Is that a motion?
Well, well, yeah, I mean, that's...
Discussion.
Yeah, that's, we're kind of, we're kind of off Robert's rules, because there's no motion on the floor to be discussing, and we're having discussion without a motion on the floor.
I make a motion that we pay the officers $100.
Well, I was going to just give leeway, because again, this is all.
Okay.
Okay, but, okay, so a motion has been made that the, are you, are you talking about the moderator, clerk, and treasurer?
Correct.
The moderator, clerk, and treasurer will be paid $100 each. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second to Anita Bean. Now we can have discussion on that. Yes, sir.
I need to get Emily to repeat something for me, and then I plan on making amendment to that motion.
Yes, absolutely.
How much is the Leland and Gray treasurer currently paying?
$500.
$500. I would like to propose amendment and motion to make that 100 for moderator, 100 for clerk, and 500 for treasurer.
There is now an amendment? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Tim Schaefer.
Tim Schaefer, yes. Yes.
I would like to amend the amendment.
I need a pen. I need to bring a pen up here. Thank you. Okay, guys, just so I don't forget.
I would like to amend the amendment to pay the moderator and the clerk each $1, and the town, the treasurer $1,000 for their work.
Is there a second?
Please take that again.
$1 for the moderator, $1 for the clerk, and $1,000 for the treasurer.
Is there a second to that motion? Seeing no second to the motion, or the amendment, I'm sorry, seeing no second to the amendment?
Well, I'll second it. Alice Gausch in Townsend. We may discuss it, is that right?
Right.
As the maker of the motion, may I speak?
You speak first.
So the moderator does this once a year, and it's, it's work, but like most civic work, it's not particularly well-paid. The treasurer, and, and the clerk also one day a year, but the treasurer, as Emily had pointed out, is an ongoing job, and it's handling the money for the district, which is now bigger than just Leland and Gray. It's now going to be, money's coming in from five different towns, plus, you know, so it's just a bigger job. And it's still not minimum wage. So that's my reasoning. I, I think that we cannot and do not pay these civil servants enough money for the time and dedication that they give to us and our children, but that's the way I would have it, and it actually would cost the taxpayers a little less than giving everybody $500. I, I don't think that doing the moderating job is equal to being the treasurer.
Excuse me, can I clarify something?
Yes, clarify, and then right here.
Yeah, because I know I didn't make a motion to pay the moderator and the clerk $500. I, and, did I, am...
I have a hundred, I have a hundred and five.
A hundred and five, okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
That's okay, yes.
I'm just curious, is the clerk responsible for producing ballots and coming up, you know, warnings and posting that kind of stuff?
I would think so.
You know, for the annual meeting, will the clerk of this board be the one doing the ballots for the budget and the warning?
I can't speak for what this board will do, but I can tell you again what Leland and Gray does, and in the past, Leland and Gray has produced their own ballots and given them to the town clerks, and the town clerks are responsible for that, the execution of the vote.
The board itself do the ballots?
The, the, yeah, the school district. We, we would designate the superintendent typically to produce the ballots that we need. We vote on the warning for those meetings. We produce the warning, we vote on it, and then we ask for the ballot. Actually, in the past, it was always the town clerks who did the ballots, but a few years ago, we had several bond votes in a row, and there was a lot of paperwork, you know, that they had to go through in, in several different years, and they asked us then, the town clerks got together and asked us if we would produce the ballots, which we did, and we still do, I believe, do that. As far as I know, we still produce them.
Yeah. So the clerk... Any further discussion? Yep, go ahead.
I, I'm just, would love to ask if, I know our superintendent is not a member of the town, but if everybody is willing to allow him to speak, which I hope you will, maybe we could ask him to clarify if there would be a difference between the work done. I know there was a statement made by Deb that this will be all the towns merging together, but actually, that's what Leland and Gray is as well. So I'm not sure myself about the increase in work between what the clerk at the Leland and Gray School District does today, as opposed to what the clerk of the merged district will do, the West River Unified School District does. So maybe if, if we're willing to allow him to speak...
And the treasurer as well.
The treasurer is actually what I meant. Sorry, I said clerk.
Well, I think, I think we have to do a motion and a second, and then a two-thirds vote.
You could say...
If there's no objection, but I could do it that way. If there's no objection, we'd like, we'd like Bill Anton to speak. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, you have the floor, sir.
I don't know the exact answer to that. I would imagine that it would be more than what's going on now, because you're going to be adding in five individual elementary school to that process. So right now, we're seven through 12, and then we would be adding in pre-K through six, and then you also have the reality of having to tease out the Wyndham pre-K through six. So I, I think it would be presumptuous of me to say it would be less, and I think that we would have enough time that maybe at a second annual meeting, we'd have some more knowledge about what we want to compensate these people. This isn't in perpetuity. This is, you know, a year-by-year thing, so...
So, okay, so what you're saying is that if we warn it again, we need to vote on compensation?
Well, we're going to do this again in a year, you know?
Yes.
I have a budget.
Name, please.
For you, Town of New Fane. So I have a budget question then. So, once we get to Article 8, we will be approving compensation for the board, so and this is going to be one whole big West River Modified Union budget, and each individual school currently has a budget for their school boards, though I recognize it's not a large amount of money. If we were to increase the compensation to $1,000, we would still essentially be saving money in comparison to what each individual school is paying their school boards, correct?
Again, that would depend on taking each individual school board, adding up all that money, and then dividing it across nine individual school directors. You're talking about Article 8, correct?
Uh, yeah. Basically, just looking at if we're going to, if we're going to increase it from 500 to 1,000, all that money comes from somewhere.
Yes.
And we count pennies right now, but if each individual school is now going into this big pot, but we now, instead of having separate boards, have one board, it will equal itself out without causing additional financial strain to the budget.
Right.
I think in general, I follow your logic.
Okay.
Yeah, one year, one member.
And, and just to, on that budgetary line, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but from a large overview, from a town budget perspective, we're voting on this year, just this year, and you will still be paying your regular school boards this year, so this would be in addition to what you're paying your regular school boards, because both boards are running simultaneously.
That's what I was thinking.
Alicia O'Donnell, sorry, we're fine.
Yes.
Carol Hisselback Newfink. So that was sort of my question, is this, this, voting on this compensation is for this year, two thousand and seventeen into two thousand and eighteen, for towns that have already set their budgets and are about to set their tax rates, and we're gonna ask them to come up with money to pay a new board, and a new moderator, clerk, and treasurer without a budget, in money allocated in their budget. So, how is that gonna work?
Yeah, wait, okay, you want, you wanna-
My question's gonna take us in a completely different direction. We need to answer that.
Okay, so I, um, the merged district has its own money, um, as part of the merger grant, so those, that, that won't be coming, uh, that won't be asking towns to deficit spend to, uh, fund the expenses of this board and, and the organization of this district.
Yes.
Good question.
So, my question is, why are we, oh, I'm sorry, Trish Coyne Newfink, why do we need to have two boards running simultaneously for the remainder of the year?
Wait, wait, hold on, we're, we're discussing compensation, and we're kind of, that's kind of out of topic right now, so.
Okay, but, but in a sense, it's not, because we're talking about compensating a new board while compensating-
We're not compensating the board. We're talking about compensating the moderator, the clerk, and the treasurer.
Okay, are the, is that moderator, clerk, and treasurer also going to serve the existing board?
No.
Are we also compensating those individuals for the existing board?
Yeah.
Do they have their own clerk, moderator, and treasurer that we are also compensating?
Only in the gray, I don't, I don't know if New Brook pays theirs, but New Brook has a, has a separate.
Yeah, New Brook does, um-
So then, in a sense, we are. So my question is, in a sense, somewhat valid?
But not at your annual.
I mean, we may, this may be taking us off into a tangent, but...
Leland and Gray only compensates the five hundred dollars to the treasurer.
Okay. But again, when we're talking about how, like, tight we are, and how many programs we're cutting at this school and other schools, I think that it is a valid question when we're saying, let's throw a thousand dollars at this and a thousand dollars at that. I think it applies.
Um, well, by statute, this board doesn't take over running the schools until July of, July 1, 2019. So, the other boards need to continue to exist and run the schools, and this board needs to, um, wrap its arms around the problem, you know, not the problem, but the, the running the new district. I mean, this is a new district. This hasn't been done before, um, you know, no board has done this. So we need to, um, you know, figure out how this is gonna work, um, implement the, um, blueprint that was given to us in the articles that were passed. And again, we have our own money. We have a grant that was, because of this merger, that's close to a hundred thousand dollars that will fund, you know, compensating the officers, compensating the board a little bit, hiring consultants, doing the things that we need to do to organize this board. So we're not putting any stress or strain on an existing school budget by running simultaneously. And, you know, to, to not run for the next year and a half, two years, and then take over July 1, 2019 with no preparation and no, no thought would be, um, impossible.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to the, the board here can choose to use the funds that we have through the grant to pay for the clerk and the, and the moderator and the treasurer, so it wouldn't be putting any tax burden. That's just-
Correct that, that. Good, good. Okay, Rick, and then Tim.
Then you can go first. Tim Schafer, Newfink. Yeah, well, I would like to observe it. It sounds like that this board that is being formed, and the new entity, taking over the jobs of Leland and Gray and, uh, four different, um, grade schools, um, is essentially gonna have twice the responsibilities, twice the budget of the Leland and Gray Board, for instance. I mean, in terms of number of students, jurisdictions, monies, I mean, we're talking huge, huge budgetary responsibilities here. And in that light, um, considering a higher compensation for the treasurer seems appropriate, if indeed the treasurer will be responsible for keeping track of, uh, basically twice the funds and the the monies coming in, the disbursement, and so forth.
I, I saw them go up, actually. One, two, three. Sorry, go ahead. Rick.
Uh, yes, once again, speaking to the, the mo, the amendment, to the amendment, to the motion.
That's what we're discussing.
The treasurer, or the salaries we're setting right now, are salaries for one year. The treasurer is going to be doing less work this year than they would be doing for Leland and Gray. This year, because they've only got X amount of money to spend right now. The treasurer, this year, from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, will only be responsible for minuscule amounts of money, and therefore, personally, I do not think, at this time, the treasurer is worth a thousand dollars. I was going with, I forgot your name. I was going with his motion for the first two, and sticking with that, but the treasurer, I don't think is worth a thousand dollars at this point. I know what everybody's saying, but not right now.
Same thing?
That was pretty much what I was gonna say, and we can revisit this in a year, and then we can discuss the thousand dollars.
Sir? That was gonna be my question and comment, is that there's gonna be less work to do until July 1, 2019, when they actually do take over the district, and there's that much more work per district, so...
I see the point.
Call the question.
Is there any further, I, we can do a two-thirds vote, or we can-
I can withdraw the amendment.
You can withdraw the amendment.
I withdraw the amendment.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so the amendment to the amendment has been withdrawn, and we're back to compensating the amended motion. The original motion was a hundred dollars each. The amended motion is a hundred, a hundred, five hundred. That's what we're discussing right now. A hundred for the moderator, a hundred for the clerk, and five hundred for the treasurer. Any discussion there?
I think it should be a hundred, a hundred, a hundred.
Okay.
For now.
Okay, thank you. We're still voting. We're gonna be voting on this. Who, who made that? That was Rick. That was the amendment there, right? So that's the amendment we have on the floor that we were voting on, if there's no other discussion. And the question's been called, so if there's no objection, we're gonna have a vote.
Oh, I would like to amend that. I would like to amend the one hundred, one hundred, one hundred.
Well, we're one, one, one hundred, one hundred, five hundred right now.
Oh, excuse me. I would like to amend the one hundred, one hundred, five hundred to one dollar for the moderator, one dollar for the clerk, and one hundred dollars for the treasurer.
How much for the treasurer?
One hundred.
One hundred.
One hundred, one dollar, and one hundred. Okay. So now we have an amendment to the amendment again. I'm sorry.
Phoebe Calley.
Phoebe Cal, Phoebe Cal, yes, second? Is there a second? There's been a second, an amendment to the amendment again. A second. Did you hear that?
Dale Stevens.
No, I can.
Newfink.
Okay. We now have amendment to amendment again, and there, any further discussion? Seeing no further discuss, is that discussion or call the question?
No, discussion.
Discussion, yes.
A dollar doesn't even pay for their mileage, if they have to travel or go anywhere. I mean, at least something. Twenty-five bucks.
Okay, that's, we're discussing. We're just discussing here. You can't amend, you can't make another amendment right now. We're on the double amendment. So, we have to, we have to vote on this eventually. And then you can re- amend after that, but, okay, any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor to pay, well, we have an amendment on the floor to pay the moderator one dollar, the clerk one dollar, and the treasurer one hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a yes vote will pass the one dollar, one dollar, one hundred. A no vote will defeat that, and we'll revert back to the original amendment. All those in favor of the one dollar, one dollar, one hundred, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
I believe the noes have it. The noes do have it. Okay, we're now on the amendment of one hundred, what was it, one hundred, one hundred, five hundred. Further discussion?
Call the question.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, the question's been called, no discussion, two-thirds vote, okay. So, a yes vote passes the one hundred, one hundred, five hundred amendment. A no vote defeats that. All those in favor of the one hundred, one hundred, five hundred, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Abstention.
Abstention?
Abstention. I abstain.
Okay. Um, I believe the ayes have that. So that now becomes the original main motion. We now have a motion on the floor to pay the moderator one hundred dollars, the clerk one hundred dollars, and the treasurer five hundred dollars. That is now the main motion. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a yes vote passes the one hundred, one hundred, five hundred motion, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. The motion has been passed. The moderator and clerk one hundred dollars, and the treasurer five hundred dollars. Article Five. To establish a date of the annual meeting. I will now entertain motions before discussion. We need to entertain a motion, really. That's right, Rick's good to come from you guys. The motion, yes.
I'm not gonna make a motion, but I, if I, if you don't mind, because I wanna just put something out there first. Is that okay? I, I don't know, I, I don't literally know what to put out for a motion, that's why I'm-
Okay, I do, is there any objection to a little discussion before a motion?
No.
Seeing no objection, please.
My apologies for not having a motion write off, but I, but at Leland and Gray, we meet, um, are, the reason why we don't, a lot of people's come to us and said, why don't you hold your meeting on town meeting? Well, we don't, because town meetings are being held that day. You can't hold your annual meeting, so we try, we made the decision to, we've always held our meeting in February, first Tuesday in February at Leland and Gray, and then when we voted Australian ballot, it was the day after that. Um, I, I have no, um, I have no, any, any reason to pick a specific date, although I will tell you whether sometimes get in the way, uh, gets in the way. But I would suggest that we have been told at Leland and Gray that voting would be much easier if we vote Australian ballot, to be voting on town meeting day when others do. So, it might be nicer to hold it closer to that, and I think we can pick-
You can pick any date between February 1st and June 1st.
So Rick's gonna do the motion for me.
Right, I, I want to continue discussion, because I have a question that's kind of relevant. Is there, or is there not already set a day for the Australian ballot, or will the Australian ballot be the day after the meeting?
We can choose that. So, for, for this board?
For the new board. Yeah, it's gonna, it's automatically gonna be Australian ballot, budget, vote.
Yes.
Has that date by, in any way, shape, or form been set yet?
Not to my knowledge, and not on this warning, no.
Okay, so, okay.
They will have to do that.
Well, I know.
But they won't do it at this meeting.
Right, this is for the, the informational meeting, the annual informational meeting, really.
I just wanted to make sure that, that, that we didn't suggest a date for the annual information meeting two weeks after the vote-
Right.
-for the budget.
Right, right, right.
I mean, you know.
Right, understood.
So...
Understood.
I will make a motion-
Yes, sir.
First Tuesday in April.
For the informational-
For the informational meeting, yes.
Second.
Okay, well, is that first Tuesday in?
April.
Okay.
Do we have to add seven PM to that?
It just says date there.
Okay.
Yes, well, uh, just, is there a second to that motion?
Second, I second.
Second, it need to be a second, discussion, yes, ma'am.
Um, did I mishear Emily, or was she saying that they did want the ballots to be done on town meetings?
So I'll, I'll-
Discussion.
There won't be an Australian ballot this first annual meeting, because the, the, the separate boards will still be producing one more budget themselves, so I think that we can have time. I, I think that date is fine as long as it's before, because there won't be an Australian ballot for the merged budget, because there won't be one yet, for another year.
Right.
What am I doing, the first Tuesday in April?
Yes, further discussion.
Gerald Julian C. Saynewfink. So the question then, what you brought up, Emily, and then we've discussed this at the Leland and Gray Board meetings, as far as, so is it at the annual meeting when, then it is discussed about combining the budget vote with town meeting vote? So is it, so having a meeting in April, just next year, because nothing can be changed for this upcoming budget vote for, um, normally, we vote in February, and then town meetings in March. So nothing can be changed for this upcoming year. It would be in that subsequent April meeting when a motion would be made to combine the budget vote with town meeting?
So, do you have a question?
Sure, yeah, please.
So, so they, so-
You don't confuse the two, because Leland and Gray continues on, um, through another budget cycle. That's a separate, that's, that's already been warned. We already know when that annual meeting is. We already know when that, uh, budget vote is. This merged board will be meeting and would hold, if this motion passes, would be holding their first, um, their second annual meeting, will be in February. Then you will, at that meeting, set a date for your next meeting, and probably, there would be a date and discussion, probably a recommendation from the board, who's actually had a year to think about this, on when the appropriate date would be for the annual meeting, and for a, a vote on a, I assume it's an Australian ballot vote, on the budget, that will be coming for the subsequent years. That will be a decision that will be recommended maybe by the board, but made by the, um, full membership of the five districts, five towns, making up the district. So it can be changed.
Any further discussion on the motion, first Tuesday in April for the annual meeting? Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor to establish the annual meeting of the West River Modified Union Education District for the first Tuesday in April, twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen. First Tuesday in April, twenty eighteen, right, eighteen? Okay. A yes vote passes that date, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. The motion passes. Article Six. To establish provisions for the payment of any expense incurred by the district. I will now entertain a motion. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, this minute, I gotta make sure I got the name right, too. Okay. You ready? Just a minute, I gotta get the name right.
That was the top of your speech.
I don't know, I'm not-
Thank you.
If I'm gonna have to repeat it, I better-
Okay. You ready?
Ready. I got one here.
I move that the West River Modified Union Education School District comply with the provisions of sixteen VSA, Section 563, subdivisions eight and nine, regarding the payment of expenses and the maintenance of financial accounts, and comply with the policies and procedures of the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union regarding such matters. That's it?
Seconded.
There is a second. Okay. Okay, so there's a motion, it's been moved and seconded. Do you want me to repeat this?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. It has been moved and seconded that the, smack his name this place. The West River Modified Union Education School District comply with the provisions of sixteen VSA, Section 563, subdivisions eight and nine, regarding the pay- regarding the payment of expenses and the maintenance of financial accounts, and comply with the policies and procedures of the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union regarding such matters.
Is there anyone who can explain what that means?
The next line, oh, yes, you, yes, next, next thing down, no, the moderator shouldn't read it. They're asking for an explanation, go ahead, yes, sir.
This language is a formality that gives the new board of the unified district the same abilities and authorities to pay bills and manage accounts held by the current boards consistent with law. Ben.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I guess I have a question about anticipated expenses. If there's nothing happening until July twenty nineteen, what expenses, if any, will there be between now and then? And what is expected to be done with that hundred thousand dollars?
Grant. Again, we're susp, can we suspend, well, I guess, is there any objection to allowing Bill Anton to talk to them? Seeing no objection, go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, uh, so the grant, uh, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it covered the two study committees that spent approximately fifty-seven, we got a few more bills, about fifty-nine thousand, which leaves approximately ninety thousand dollars, and that's for the entire supervisory union. And so we have three separate entities that could end up in a two by two by one. One of them being the West River Modified Union Education District, one being a combination of Dover and Wardsborough in the River Valley Education District, and one being the one standalone of the Marlboro School District. So that ninety thousand dollars will cover the next two years before you become legal, July first, two thousand nineteen. You're gonna have to do all your legal work to create a new arrangement if you have any kind of relationship with a education association. Ninety days after you become an education district, you are required to reach out to the existing bargaining unit that you currently have any contract with, with any of these entities, to start talking about what that world will look like in two thousand nineteen. You also have to recreate every single policy, so you're gonna have to have a lot of legal advice about how that's gonna happen. And you have to figure out how you're going to merge all of your financial world that are all run in different systems and different environments into one unified system. So, our anticipation right now is all of that work is going to go into that investment.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor, would you like me to read it again? Or, I'll read it again, there's a motion on the floor that the West River Modified Union Education District comply with the provisions of sixteen VSA, section five sixty-three subdivision eight and nine, regarding the payment of expenses and the maintenance of financial accounts, and comply with the policies and procedures of the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union regarding such matters. A yes vote will pass the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I believe the ayes have it, the motion passes. Article seven, maybe I should keep this for a second. Article seven, to authorize this district to borrow money pending receipt of payments from the state education fund by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from date, provided however, that the newly formed district is authorized by the Vermont statutes to borrow sufficient funds to meet pending obligations.
I got it, David.
What?
I make the motion.
Rick makes the motion. Second?
No, I haven't made it yet, I gotta, I gotta use the words.
Oh, you can just say so moved, if you choose to.
I'm, no, I'm gonna make the motion.
Please make the motion, sir.
I move that the West River Modified Education School District have the power to borrow money pending receipt of payments from the state education fund by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from the date, provided however, that the newly formed district is authorized by Vermont statutes to borrow sufficient funds to meet pending obligations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now I can read the explanation.
Oh, okay.
Okay, just so everybody knows, okay. This language is a formality that gives the new board of the unified district the same abilities to borrow money currently held by the existing districts and board. And that's all I know.
Me, too. So it's been moved and seconded that, is there any other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, it's been moved, where'd it go, are we on seven? It's been moved that the West River Modified Union Education District have the power to borrow money pending receipt of payments from the state education fund by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from date, provided however, that the newly formed district is authorized by the Vermont statutes to borrow sufficient funds to meet pending obligations. A yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, I believe the ayes have it, the ayes do have it. Article eight, to determine and approve compensation, if any, to be paid to school board directors. I will now entertain a motion.
I move that every school director be paid one thousand dollars and the chair be paid fifteen hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Wait a second.
It's been moved and seconded that the school directors get paid one thousand dollars each, and the school director get paid fifteen hundred dollars.
Chair.
Chair, school chair, director chair, thank you. The school chair get fifteen hundred dollars. Discussion, yes, sir.
How many school board members are there?
Nine.
Nine.
So we're talking about ninety-five hundred dollars. Out of the thirty thousand dollars that's allocated to the school district.
Further discussion?
Well, there's nine now, there will be, at, at the next town meeting, there will be two more directors elected, um, from the at-large directors from the other towns, so that ultimately will be eleven.
But that'll be after next town meeting?
Yes, but still prior to, you know, still prior to becoming operation.
Further discussion? Yes.
And so the money for the compensation would come from the grant?
The money from the compensation will come from the grant?
Yes.
Further discussion?
I just want to amend the motion.
You, you're allowed to amend?
I would, I would amend the motion to pay the school directors four hundred dollars and the chair five hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to four hundred, four hundred for the, four hundred for the mem, members?
Four hundred for the directors and five hundred for the chair.
Four hundred for the directors and five hundred for the chair. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, just throw some light on things. To get people that are interested in this job, we're having a very difficult time. And I think compensation is one of the issues, not the biggest issue, but to come out on meetings and do all the work that's required, and to have someone with the, the abilities to do these jobs. I think the first, uh, the first amendment was what, what...
The first motion?
Yes, the first motion. I think it clearly gives us the opportunity to say to people that we respect what they're doing and they should be compensated for. You know, four hundred dollars is a lot of money, a thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in a whole school district as ours, I think people need to be recognized that we need to have some talent. And I think by offering a compensation package a little higher would be, I think, to the betterment of the district. We have hard times getting people to volunteer to do things, and I can understand that, so, um, that's my feeling. I just think that we need to compensate people a little more. I know in today's world where money is tight, but by the same token, we have to face reality. We need to have someone who has the ability and the desire to do it, but they need to be compensated for it.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Deborah Loski Nuthane, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the people who are up there doing this incredibly difficult work, um, of creating a new school board with a little bit of guidance and a lot of chutzpah. It's really tremendous. At the same time, I wanna say that a thousand dollars would only touch the childcare needed if there is a parent who doesn't have a partner who's available to be home watching the kids, or a grandparent, that it would allow people to pick up something to eat on their way to a meeting for another night away from home. It's not a lot of money, it's not paying people for what they're doing, but it does actually make it easier for people who might not otherwise be able to afford to, to sit on the board, people who might want to, and, and it just makes it that much easier. Otherwise, we could end up with a lot of very wealthy people who can afford to do what they want with our public schools, as we're seeing elsewhere.
I agree with a lot of what you say, sorry, I'm stuck here. The work that you all do is absolutely incredible, and the hours that you put in is endless. As someone who tries to do my best to come to board meetings regularly, there is, there are always attendance challenges, and, um, I appreciate you all as board members because you're here to be board members, and you're not here for the money. And I like that, in its own way, it's the same reason that I'm invested in education. I'm not here for the money, um, I'm here because it matters to me. And while I would love to give you all as much money as you deserve, I like, I mean, sorry for making enemies, but the, the price tag of being a board member is like a formality, because you're not, you're not here for the money, I hope you're not here for the money. You're here to be board members and because you care about our communities. So, I think the precedent of starting at a thousand dollars and fifteen hundred dollars as things get tighter and tighter and we move away from the grant is going to get very, very difficult. So I think the four hundred dollars is reasonable, but that has nothing to do with my great appreciation for all the work that you do.
I guess my question is for the board members, what is the workload that's anticipated for the next year? How many meetings are you gonna have, how long are those meetings gonna be? That's all.
I would, I, I would guess we're gonna meet monthly, um, for at least two hours a month. And there is easily, um, there, there are several hours, um, there are several hours a month of preparation time, reading, learning, and dealing with emails and phone calls from community members to put it together. You know, there, there's, it's, it's a fair, it's a fair, um, piece of work for a volunteer job.
I'd say it'll be more than a normal board hours. I mean, we're starting from the ground up, so.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll have the monthly meetings, will there be other meetings in between? Lots of reading, yeah, I think there's the potential for more.
Further discussion, yes, ma'am.
Um, well, considering that this will be developing the new board, and it is grant funded, once established, this could be revisited, and then, I know what Phoebe's saying, once we start out at this higher price, it would be harder to drop down. But if in fact the initial amount of work is going to be in getting it set up, could it be revisited later once things settle and it's a more regular schedule of events or meetings? And then assess that when we no longer are, and is the grant only to establish this board? That if, once that grant's done, it's done, or will that be able to be refunded?
No.
So it's a one-time grant?
Let's answer the question, yes, sir.
Seeing how the four hundred dollars came from a board member, and we're talking about thirty-seven hundred bucks versus ninety-five hundred bucks, I call the question.
Call the question, question's been called, any objection to the called question, so we don't have to stop? Okay, seeing no objection, there's an amend, where'd I put it? There's an amendment on the floor to pay the school directors of the new West River Modified Union Education District four hundred dollars each, and the chairman five hundred dollars. A yes vote will pass the amendment, four hundred dollars and five hundred for the chairman, and no vote will defeat that amendment. Everybody understand? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? No. I believe the ayes have it, the ayes do have it. We now have a main motion on the floor to pay the West River Modified Union Education District directors four hundred dollars and the chairman five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we will now vote on the main motion. It's been moved and seconded to pay the West River Modified Union Education District directors four hundred dollars and the chairman five hundred dollars. A yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? No. I believe the ayes have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion passes. Article nine, to determine whether to authorize the board of school directors pursuant to the provisions of sixteen VSA five sixty-three ten and eleven C to provide mailed notices to residents of the availability of the annual report and proposed school budget in lieu of distributing the annual report and proposed budget.
So moved.
Want to repeat that one?
No. I gave my, I gave this paper's back to Phil, so I don't have it.
It's been, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, discussion, what is this, is this nine? Okay, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, this is...
Where would the annual report and the proposed budget be if we were notifying people of the availability of it? Would it be at the post office, where could they get it? Could they only get it online? Would we be sa, I mean, I'm assuming that we'd be saving money by not just mailing it out, right? That's the objective here?
Excuse me, can, can one of the Leland and Gray members respond to that, because you have experience?
Yeah, sure. That's, that's what we do now, um, you know, it would be, it would be a similar procedure where we would let you know, and it, you know, we leave stacks of them here, post offices, town clerk, stores. You know, they're readily available, they are online, but it would be the same as, as Leland and Gray does now.
If I could just follow up?
Please, more, more discussion?
We have published less and less annual reports over the years, bec, as more people have gone online. I mean, some people still don't have good internet service around here, but more people do today, more people use it, so we find we, we don't use, people don't actually pick up paper copies as much. But we still do publish and we still do make them available at Leland and Gray. My guess is we still need to do the same thing for those who are going into the stores and the post offices and stuff to be able to grab theirs. So I think it would be, I think we would be doing a similar thing.
Further discussion, yes.
Just clarification, so I understanding then that you would continue to send us like a postcard saying you can pick it up, which is a lot cheaper?
Yeah, I mean, we actually don't even do that at Leland and Gray. At Leland and Gray, what we do is we send a budget summary, a, a four-page budget summary, which also tells you where you can get the annual report, the full annual report, and where you, and gives you a link online to where you can get it, because we publish it online on this, on the school board's website. But, yeah, we'd still send something out in the mail. We don't mail annual reports and haven't for many, many years. It's really expensive, even to mail postcards, it's expensive.
Any further discussion on that word soup? Seeing no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded to determine whether to authorize the board of school directors pursuant to the provisions of sixteen VSA five sixty-three ten and eleven C to provide mailed notice to residents of the availability of the annual report and proposed school budget in lieu of distributing the annual report and proposed budget. A yes vote will pass the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I believe the ayes have it, the ayes do have it, and the motion passes. Article ten, to just, to transact any other school business thought proper when met. However, it says, I read somewhere that this is not a business meeting, so like in a non-binding business in a town meeting, you can vote on it, but it doesn't, it's not binding. There's no voting here, we can discuss other things, but there's no motions or, or anything like that. So is there any other discussion, yes, sir?
Well, you mentioned the word, or the phrase, word soup.
Oh, yes.
I was wondering if there's been any discussion or talk of changing the name of the district out of West River Modified Union School Education District to something simpler, like...
Order number one.
Okay.
First item on the agenda.
Okay.
What I could point out, so...
Any objection to allowing him to speak? Seeing no objection, go right ahead. Seeing no objection, go right ahead, sir.
So, you can't get rid of modified, because it is legally by statute modified, because Wyndham is pre-K through six, and then they joined in seven through 12. You can't get rid of the word union, because it is a union, you can't get rid of education district, and so then we're just talking about those first two words, which is West River. So, yes, the board can come up with a nickname that they want to sell to, to the community, and that's cool, but they're gonna have very limited options. We can be the big WR, you know, I mean...
We, I mean, I, I, Leland and Gray is not Leland and Gray, Leland and Gray is the Leland and Gray Union School District, so, you know, I would assume that we'll be West River District or something.
So, do you do a DBA, or how does that work?
Literally, you, literally, you just use that for the, for the official, so...
The official, I have to say it every time.
Well, that's official. You're official, I'm sorry.
WR-MUED. Any other, any other things that want to be discussed? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for the board, and that, I mean, again, such appreciation for the work that you do, do you have committees, do you have need for more, for more people to do, you know, specialized directed tasks, or are you just shouldering this all by yourselves?
We don't know yet.
The board still has to organize itself, and we'll do that at our first meeting that we meet, and I'm assuming we're gonna find a date and meet, we'll, we'll do that, but I would expect that over the next year, while we're trying to figure out how the best way we move forward, we're gonna be doing everything we can to engage the communities into this conversation. That is what I think, I hope, I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm pretty sure everybody who's joined this board feels the same way, that there is nothing more important than getting the community engaged in the work that we're doing. So, maybe we can hold forums or something to try to get feedback, but we'll have to decide whether there will be, you know, committee work and all that. I know Bill did mention that we have policies that we all have to develop and go through, so that'll take quite a bit of effort.
Want to speak?
Yeah, I would just say, during the study committee process, that was something that was highly discussed, and was one of the big reasons that in the Articles of Agreement, it was to start July 1st, 2019, to allow for a runway to engage the community, instead of immediately start operations, because if we had to operate July 1st, 2018, we'd be building a budget right now, instead of it having time to figure out what it is we want to build.
Any other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Second? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. July 17th is the next gathering of...